I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask Mr. Digg, you live in the hall, please.
Harley and Kenny, here's Ray Acapiti, Bill Lukens, Martin Meyer, Bob Nelson, Sam Powers, Ron Richards, Allison Ritterbush, thank you.
Okay, we do have a quorum. I'd ask for a motion to adopt the agenda. And again, prior to going through any of the items on the agenda for anyone on the council, if you do have a conflict of interest, I would ask that you would advise the council prior to voting.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any comments? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. You have in your packages the minutes from the October 1st council meeting. I'd accept a motion to approve those minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 1st council meeting. Is that good?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the October 1st council meeting. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. You have in your packages the bills in between for $143,432.76. I would ask for a motion to approve those bills in between.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills in between to the amount of $143,432.76.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve those bills in between. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. You have in your packages the current claims. There is one correction on the current claims. If you'll turn to page three, you'll notice partway down the page that we paid double for publishing a legal ad in the paper. And we're taking that claim out, which would leave a new total of $42,539.43. I'd expect to accept a motion to approve current claims for $42,539.43.
Make a motion to approve the current claims of $42,539.43.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to accept those current claims. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. We'll be having a public hearing at 7:10 and another public hearing at 7:15. At this time, I'd like to move on in the agenda to the communications from the public. Are there any communications from the public? Seeing done, we'll move on to the committee reports. And again, keep it in mind that we'll be interrupting at the appropriate time to call forth the public hearing. Administrative and Finance, Bob?
The next administrative and finance committee meeting will be November 5th, City Hall, at 1:00.
Okay, Airport Advisory Committee, Bill?
The next meeting will be Thursday, October 25th, at 8:00 a.m. at the airport.
Okay, thank you. Custer Fall River Waste Management, Ron?
Next meeting will be at the Miller Civic Center, 15th of November, at 7:00 p.m.
Okay, thanks, Ron. Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, Harley?
The next meeting will be November 7th, the first Wednesday of the month, at 5:00 in the library.
Evans Pudge Advisory Committee, Allison is not here. Kim, did you have anything that was... Were you at that meeting? Did you have anything? No, nothing to report on that. Parks Recreation, Beautification, and Cultural Development, Marty Meyer is not here tonight. Don't have a report for that. Planning and Zoning Commission, Allison again is not here. We do have a planning and zoning meeting this Wednesday at 7:00 in City Hall. Public Safety, Bill?
Our meeting will be this Wednesday, the 17th, at 2:00 p.m. in City Hall.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Public Works, Bob? And Ray is the vice chairman.
Public Works met on October 9th, City Hall. Mayor Cottee, Councilman Acapiti, Caleb Tracy, Scott, Ed Jensen, Bart Benson, and myself. Number of old business items, the Houston Sewer Avenue project that's in progress, moving along. We talked about the grant request for chipping of the brush piles and landfill. The next grant award period is December, so we're hopeful that we'll have an answer by whether our grant request has been approved or not. We talked about water and sewer rates. We talked about those with you at the last council meeting. We reviewed two city ordinances, Chapter 21, wastewater and storm... Chapter 21, which is wastewater and stormwater, and Chapter 26A, which is Water Code. And we made recommended changes to adjust the city's sewer and water rates and other changes to update the ordinances. The rate adjustments are necessary to ensure the city is charging appropriately for these services, which enhances the city's ability to apply for grants or loans to maintain our water and sewer infrastructure. Mayor Cottee asked Tracy to confirm with contractors the anticipated start dates for the remaining roof repairs on City Road, the Miller Center, and wastewater treatments repairs. The Freedom Trail expansion, Kim's working with Loeb Mark Blue Cross Blue Shield to schedule a remodeling cutting for the Freedom Trail. Hope that'll be sometime in November. Have a number of new business items. Ed Jensen spoke with us about replacing an electric panel on a hangar used for the fire plane base. Ed's received two quotes for the repair. Quotes recommend different types of repairs to meet State Electrical Code. Scott will talk with the South Dakota Electrical Inspector to determine which quote best meets the South Dakota Electric Code. We talked about the lot on the corner of the University in Chicago. The city has received a letter from the South Dakota Department of Transportation offering the city to buy the lots at the corner of the University in Chicago. Mayor Cottee has asked the Public Works, Admin Finance, and Parks Committees to look at the pros and cons of buying the lots and make a recommendation to purchase or not purchase the property. Black Hills Energy will be doing tree trimming and some removal along their lines of town as the weather permits from now through winter. They will be trimming along roadways, alleys, and on some city-owned property. We had a request for a sewer rebate from a private property owner to rebate the sewer portion of their monthly bill for August 2018. The property is currently vacant, and the sewer hasn't been used since late July 2018. The city doesn't require or doesn't charge a sewer availability fee, and the property owner hasn't been using the sewer. So the committee agreed to refund the sewer fee for August, for the August bill, and not charge the usage fee going forward. Ray, do you have anything?
No comment.
The next Public Works meeting will be October 30th, 3:00 p.m. in City Hall.
Thanks, Bob. Again, a lot of things accomplished at that meeting. Really appreciate it. Southern Hills Economic Development, Marty is not here.
Their meeting is Friday.
Pardon, go ahead.
Shadcombe has their Friday meeting at 11:30 at the Bowery Alley.
Okay, thank you. And we're approaching the 7:10 hour. You have Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, and we're looking at buying Jason the snowplow to keep the course open a little bit longer, but he's kind of balking at that. Time is now 7:10, and I'd like to call hearing to order for temporary alcoholic beverage license from the Boys and Girls Club of Hot Springs. That's to be used at 801 South Sixth Street here on the 3rd of November. That's in conjunction with their Wine and Reeds event. I believe that's a fundraising event for the Boys and Girls Club. Are there anyone... Is there anyone here from the Boys and Girls Club that would like to speak to the event and why we should have it? Go ahead, Chris.
I'm not...
Would you come up to the mic, please?
I can. I can just give you a little bit of info. I'm not really with the R and D committee anymore. My wife and my girls and everything else keeps me a little busy at the moment, but it's our annual fundraiser for the club. We've consolidated everything, I think, into one event, and it's our biggest and most attended fundraiser here in the Southern Hills for our club. All of the funds that are raised stay here at our club. This is... It's a great event for the club. It's... I think this is our eighth year, eighth or ninth year, and it's been here for going on five years, I think.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
And if you will note in their request, they do have a way of... Since it is a Boys and Girls Club, they do have a way of identifying through wristbands those that are old enough to partake of the wine and malt beverages. Are there any questions or comments from the council?
Rudolph?
Okay, great. The time is now 7:12. We'll go ahead and close the hearing on a temporary alcoholic beverage license. And at this time, I'd ask for a motion to approve that alcohol beverage license for the Boys and Girls Club.
I'll make a motion to approve the temporary alcoholic beverage license from Boys and Girls Club of Hot Springs to be used at 801 South Sixth Street on November 3rd, 2018 in conjunction with their Wine and Reeds event.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we do approve that temporary alcohol beverage license. Are there any further comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing done. I'd ask all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion does carry. And we'll be waiting the 7:15 hearing concerning the land exchange. As we move on in committee reports, Ron, can you give us a quick report on the Volunteer Fire Department?
Volunteer Fire Department, excuse me, that 9th October, 2018, at the Volunteer Fire Center. New business, 9th October was the start of National Fire Prevention Week. They had visits to the schools, an open house at 7:00 p.m. at the Volunteer Fire Department, which was quite well-attended. They're beginning setting up essential training twice a month for all members. Pete Miles from City Waterworks was approved for a one-year probation as a fireman. Harley Spray completed one-year probation and was voted into full membership. A motion was made and passed to pay firefighters for the Vineyard Fire that state has not paid them yet. Motion to adjourn at 7:45, next meeting, 13th of November, at Hot Springs Volunteer Fire Department, 7:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Appreciate your attending that very important meeting. Comprehensive Plan Coordinator, Sam?
No updates since last time.
Okay, thank you. And we've got less than a minute here to wait, so... The time is 7:15. I'd like to call the hearing, public hearing. This public hearing deals with the intent to exchange land on the corner of 21st and Canton, which is known as the Old Waterfield Station, for land on the corner of Evans 10 and 11th Street, which is known as the Armory Lot. We're making that exchange, and the city intends to make that exchange with a private owner. I would open that hearing at this time. Is the private owner, Mr. Donald, that his wife here? Would you care to come forward and speak to this?
I guess I'd just hear if there's any questions.
Okay.
It seems very straightforward, George. If anybody's got any questions or whatever, you'd have to address them.
Okay. And for the council and the public's information, in accordance with South Dakota law, we have obtained three different appraisals for the value of the property from non-interested real estate agents within the city of Hot Springs. The average value of that property that on Canton Avenue for the lots that we would be trading is $14,729. The highest appraisal was at $20,000, the lowest at $11,687. We, as councilperson Allison mentioned at the last meeting that we discussed this, our plan is to bring this on the agenda at the planning and zoning meeting and to make any necessary zoning changes that would be needed as a result of our action. And then, our city administrator and the property owners would work out an agreement of how that transfer would take place, and that would be forwarded to the council for your approval. As we have discussed before, the advantage is that we would be having some building of some elderly housing that would go up on the corner of the Old Waterfield Station and hopefully spur some building as we redo the RFP for the workforce housing on the remainder of the lots. The Armory Lot property, as has been mentioned before, the building itself is right on the property line. You would have to get any kind of an ease, construction easement, to do any work on the armory, whether it be tear it down, remodel it, or what. And also, owning that lot on the corner would allow us to have access to sewer, sewer line that would not require a lift station, as it's the city's intent to develop that or have that property developed into workforce housing. Are there any questions that any of you on the council have or any comments that you have to make concerning this land swap?
The comment I'd like to make is that when you look at the assessments that were provided, the city certainly is going to get property valued at more than from the private property or than the value of the city-owned lots. So it certainly is in our favor to make the swap in addition to the benefits that Mayor has talked about as far as getting some construction going on on that lot.
Are there any other comments from the council or from the public? Yes, I see a hand. If you'd come up to the microphone, please, and identify yourself.
Hello. My name is... Excuse me. Never seen you like this kind of thing before. My name is Ellen Conroy, and I'm with Blue Angel Properties. And I attended the last planning and zoning meeting, and I've gone with Kim and some of the council members and looked at the RFP, and we are interested in building on that lot. Kind of came to knowing about this a little bit after Don was talking about doing the land exchange. I just wanted to let the council know that there is a developer interested in building on the lot at the four planted lots as it looks in the RFP, the old RFP. We didn't find out about this until after it was withdrawn. But we're interested in building on those four lots to maximize the workforce housing that the city is looking for, that the VA is concerned about available workforce housing here. So our interest is in doing it on the whole piece of property to kind of maintain the integrity of the design of the proposal that we're putting in.
Okay. And would your company be interested in any kind of future development, say, on the old Armory lots if that Armory building were not there?
Sure. I don't know too much about that property, but I was told that there's asbestos in the building and that there's some issues with the ground. So I have a lot of concerns. I would want to look into that. Do you know more about that?
I believe the asbestos is non-cryable. It is, with the roofing, is the latest information that I have. As far as I know, there's no environmental concerns, but that would be something that we would be getting with the ENR to come, as we did with the Canton Avenue lots, and do an assessment.
So would it be the city's responsibility to remove the existing building in order for it to be developed? How do you see that?
Well, we'd have to develop a plan, and the original workforce housing plan that this previous council plan had addressed was the possibility of the city tearing that down as part of a grant from the state. However, that grant was not approved, so we would have to find some additional dollars to do that, and be willing to work with a contractor to find a way either to use the brick there as a fill material to level those lots and bring them up to more of a grade closer to the street. You know, we'd also entertain any contractor that would want to turn that building into perhaps living quarters, condominiums, and so forth.
Just another thought on this is that if the RFP is going to go back out in November, which I don't know if that's for sure, but that's something we kind of talked about and then...
Yes, that's our plan.
And then be decided in January or February, well, then we could get started building in March, hopefully, if the March isn't like our October has been. You know, just kind of putting things together for our season coming up. I know that was part of the discussion before about possibly why other contractors hadn't come forward, because they were busy. So we'd like to have something lined up and ready to go for the next construction season. So I don't know if that timeline would work with our Armory property.
Yeah, and that would be certainly... We wouldn't expect that to be in that same construction season unless your company would be big enough or large enough to be able to handle that. And we certainly aren't ready to come up with an RFP for that within the next couple of months. We've got a lot of legwork that would need to be done. So, and again, I want to ask you, are you... You then would not be willing to submit an RFP if the property were just three lots? Or would you be able to utilize four lots on the remaining property and be able to put workforce housing if we replatted that into four smaller lots?
I'm not sure I'm following what you're saying. If it's planted as four now?
Right. And what we... Originally, we would be able to accept as much, as many as five or six homes based on the dimension of the homes and the setbacks if a developer were to come in with that kind of a scheme. What I'm asking is, would you be considered if we traded this property and the remaining property were divided into four lots, smaller lots?
Yeah, that's something Don had talked about, that between 21st and 22nd, it could actually be five lots, and then he would exchange the one, and there'd be four less. So is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Well, it's more just the design integrity of the project as we see it, that they would be four lots with four similar structures.
Okay.
Not necessarily just four, because we're trying to maximize it for available workforce housing. So, and, you know, access, egress routes in and out of the houses or properties, just we would like to consider it the whole thing, is the way the RFP was before.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you coming forward. That's exciting. Go ahead, Bob.
It's Ellen.
Yeah.
I'd like to follow up on the mayor's question and try to pin you down a little more. Are you able to say if you don't have four lots as they exist now, you wouldn't be interested in submitting a request for proposal? The remaining three lots, however they might be divided, do you want all or none?
I guess you could put it that way. So it's 320 feet by 150 feet, and so that is roughly 80 feet wide per lot, and then they go along this way. So if you shrink them down that much more, it makes it harder to fit something in with the 10-foot setbacks in between and the 25 setbacks on the front and the sides. So I'm just not sure if it would fit. And we're looking to do something this season, so, you know, yes, we'd be interested in the Armory thing as well, potentially, but we're just looking to do something in 2019.
Sure. Okay. Are there any other comments from the... Are there any other questions for Ellen? Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Don, do you have any comments?
Just a little history on those lots. There were originally six lots on that half block. That alley platted through from north and south, which doesn't exist. So remember, P and Z, several years ago, we were asked by the city to kind of clean that up so they could just sell it. And so we just put four lots in there that are 80 foot each. That's how that happened. When the RFP was sent out the first time, it was kind of to be a blank slate, and somebody could divide it any way they wanted to. And the city would plant it and put the utilities in, because the sewer for that property comes from the west. So the particular lot that I'm interested in currently doesn't have any sewer service. But easement has to come up with that. Now, I don't know what kind of project they're referring to, but when we look at residential A zoning is what that is in Hot Springs, it's very specific in the fact that only thing allowed on residential A is single-family or duplexes. So if they're proposing a project that has different ingress and egress and everything, a multi-use building that's for lack of condominium or whatever else, there's an amount of hurdles to overcome with that, which I've been involved with in the past for the last 43 years in and out of these things. And that's why you have the Armory situation, and it is now when that lot got divided, because they wanted to put uses in there. the past for the last 43 years, you know, and all these things. And that's why you have the armory situation and it is now when that lot got divided, because they wanted to put uses in there that weren't allowed within a residential A or without a use under U. And normally, the neighborhoods have been very strong in voicing their opinions, controlling what goes in their neighborhoods based on they've been given some assurance that they're living in a community that has zoning, multi-use, mixed use, RA, RB, there's a whole gamut of these things. So I guess from the RFP standpoint, and we go back to that, we're trying to design the RFP to fit the current city ordinances. So you don't have to try to go back and come back to this body and ask for a bunch of changes in the setbacks and whatever. And then the radar goes up in the neighborhood like, what are you doing now? We don't want that in our neighborhood. So then you have to deal with that. So that's just a cautionary thing. The thing I'm proposing is duplexes, which fit within that criteria. So that we don't have to ask for a fourplex or whatever. I can't imagine. These people are obviously designers on a scale. They have to be careful that they fit that in. In planning zoning now, we're currently looking at what we call a PUD, which is a Planned Unit Development, to allow people to bring projects in and have them reviewed based on the criteria for fire and safety and neighborhood compatibility. So that we can get away from having everything happen to be a strict 10-foot side yard setback, 25-foot front yard, rear yard, most types of things. So we're trying to evolve as that comes along to, the zoning is probably, it's currently been some modifications, it's been around since the 70s, early 70s. And it was frankly just grabbed from somebody else's stuff and then implemented in Hot Springs. So the point being, we're trying to make this thing, I would consider what I'm talking about reaches the goals of the housing study and is compatible with the RFP. Somebody could have come in and said, I want to put four lots here and do exactly what I'm talking about on the other end, and we'd be having the same discussion. I'm just giving you the opportunity to put the armory lots back together. Because it's, it should have never been divided the way it was divided. And however that all happened with the city and the lawsuit and all that went down, it got divided. And literally, the property line is right against the brick on that wall. Like when they're building a property or two, there's just no way you can get that building down without, you know, I don't know any of those. So if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them if anybody does. That's a lot of history, a lot of, but that's how we got to this point.
I do have some questions, Don. Talking about the armory lot. It's my understanding that it's advantageous for the city to own both of those lots. If a private owner owns them and the city wants to sell the lot that the armory sits on, and somebody wants to tear that building down, then whoever would purchase it would be a construction easement. Is that the correct word to tear down the building?
I think people fall across that line. It's on the line. It's quite possible if took apart piece by piece, Bob, you may live in one.
But that would be the advantage to having easement is that if something fell on the property, then it's okay during the construction.
Yeah, it should have never been separated. But I also believe that it's your closest access to the sewer is over in Evansville. It's not going back to the south and or clear down that other street that's not even developed. I don't know, Bob. Those are just some of the issues.
So it's, it's in the city's advantage to own both those lots because that's, we can give whatever easement is necessary to whoever would purchase the lot.
Yeah, I think that's.
Can I understand that correctly?
Yeah, it shouldn't have been divided at the beginning. I don't think so. I'm not sure how that all plays.
Okay. So then when we look at the, your lot, comparing it in size to the lots up on the old water fill station, can a light structure be put on that lot that would be put on the lots up by the water fill station in that if, if what this group is after is four lots, they would be able to put up three structures on the old water fill station, they'd be able to put up a fourth structure next to the armory lot once, if the city's able to figure out what to do with the building, and can they like that?
There's, there's actually some other property on the armory lot. When you kind of turn the corner and go back to the east, the city's got a lot and there's some county laying down there too, which would tie it all back into Evansville. So, yeah, I mean, and you got to decide if what you want in the traditional sense is city zoning ordinance, not just zoning ordinance. Ordinance is required a 50-foot frontage for a house. So simply dividing the lots on the water fill station, we look at just how many single-family homes we would be able to. That's kind of what we're talking about. Or a duplex which is split potentially into private ownership or whatever you want to call it, but it fits the zoning. But if we're looking for single-family homes, there's not any real other way to divide them. If the property gets held in common, the 80-foot divisions were terrible when you look at them from a development standpoint, because a corner lot requires more land because you got a 25-foot setback and a 25-foot setback in the town. So you take a 35 up, an interior lot only requires 20 feet. So there's 15-foot difference. But we just divided them because the city was going to sell them. And then it turns out the city decided the whole goes back from the recent sale that he had. It's been not too recent now, maybe, but yeah, two years ago, when you sold that other property, the water tower property and all that, well, this is what was left. It was just held out for workforce housing.
Okay. I don't know about else. It does. Thank you.
There any other questions or comments from the council or from the audience, Ellen?
I just want to clarify about quick, we're not talking about doing anything different than the residential area or what the RFP shows. We wouldn't be asking for any variation from what it is.
Okay. And you are, again, looking at single-family homes or duplexes?
Single-family or duplexes, yes.
Eat which one?
We'll show that in the RFP.
Pardon?
We'll show that in the RFP.
Okay.
But the way that the architect has drawn it up and what we've rough sketched it for it to work. It's, you know, two on the outside, two on the insides.
Any other comments or questions from the audience or from the council?
Let me just try to make a summary of what I think I'm hearing is that if we want that land in both locations to be usable, then it's prudent, then it's prudent for us to approve this and make the swap. If we don't do it, we're going to have a lot of land that's essentially, may not be useless, but it'd be very, very difficult to develop it in any useful way. Is that, is my assumption correct?
Of the armory property.
Yeah, the armory property, property especially.
That's, that's correct. Thank you. If there are any other comments? Okay, hearing done, we'll go ahead and close the hearing at 7:38. And we'll move on as we have this item later on in the agenda and take that up at this time, at that time. Moving on in the agenda, we do have an ordinance to consider. We have a copy of the first reading of ordinance 1193. This is the ordinance amending the traffic regulations. You can see there's been quite an extensive revision to that. I would ask for a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 1193.
I'll make a motion to approve the first ordinance of 1193 and ordinance amending chapter 24-8, traffic regulations.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the first reading of ordinance 1193. And it looks like we do have a, do we get that resolved?
I'm sorry.
Did you get it resolved?
Yes.
We see the lawyer attorney get up. It's a two-word and then we pay attention to what he's saying.
We're all good.
Is there any discussion concerning the traffic regulation ordinance that you have before you? And please note, our city administrator, Kim, did pass out an additional page for you to consider. I don't know if you've all had a chance to read that or not.
I have a couple of comments. On page 10, first paragraph, one of the changes that we had discussed, I'm trying to find a different section in here. Okay. Keep page 10 in mind, but go back to page 7, please. Under traffic control devices, first 124-805010. There are a number of references in the ordinance that the police department shall recommend where or when where traffic control signals. And one of the discussions that we came into was, Misty brought this to our attention, is where does the police department make that recommendation to? So that's the language that's added to the Public Safety Committee. So I think in reading back on page 10, the police department shall recommend where, when to estimate and properly assign locations. That same language needs to be added to that, to the Public Safety Committee. So I'm recommending that change. And then, Kim or Misty, would you like to speak to the woman that you provided for us?
I can do that. On page 16.
Could you get closer the mic cancel, get it open here, please?
On page 16, if you go to 24A13.010A, we've changed some of the language in that particular section. We've added this, on your extra paper here, colored in green, just to make sure that we're clarifying that the common council has the authority to change those things, but by resolution or ordinance. We just clarified the language and the rest of the section A remains the same. So I just wanted to make sure that that was added. Is that clear?
So what we will be doing is, as we look at this and vote on this ordinance, we'll be looking at the changes listed on page 16 and the change on page 10, I believe it is, yeah, 10.
And one more.
Oh, okay. I'm jumping ahead there. Go ahead.
No, that's fine. On page 17, it's just a deletion, 24-8.14.010, protective head, or protective element, protective element required for minor. And then there's finite bond in red, that needs to be removed. That was in the ordinance as we were looking to, whether we wanted to delete something or potentially add something, that if something was deleted, that's currently on the finite bond schedule, then we need to make sure that we reflected that on the new finite bond schedule. So that just needs to be removed as it need to be in the final ordinance.
And I'd like to add on that page as well, just right above that, number D was a brand new section that we added specifically to address citizens' concerns of overnight parking of tractor trailers in residential areas, specifically causing problems with noise and extra burden on traffic. So as far as an overall change to the regulations, this particular section is, is brand new.
Any other comments, changes, recommendations?
We have made some very, very minor changes that will be coming to you via email. I'm not going to try and print this out for everybody again, it's quite a bit of paper, but I will send it out to everybody. Again, all the new highlights will be in green, but they're minor changes, just so that you can see that, nothing that would change the, the content.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
I got one comment. I can see why there are your ulties when you read. I had the seven on page two. The definition of intersection.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
What are they saying?
Exactly.
That's, that's exactly. And as we began to peel back that onion, we found that there were several more definitions and comments like that, that the ordinance was outdated and unclear in some areas, so.
And just so the, the public doesn't consider this a, a private joke, I would like to read the definition that is being deleted. An intersection is the area embraced within the prolonged or connection of the lateral curb lines, or if none, then the lateral boundary lines of the roadway of two streets which join one another at or approximately at right angles, or the area within which vehicles traveling upon different highways, joining at any other angle may come in conflict. The new definition of an intersection is, an intersection is an at-grade junction where two or more roads meet or cross. So that, when we were talking, or, you know, Ron mentioned that, those are the types of things we really tried to go through, tried to go through and say what we mean and understand what we said. Because otherwise, it makes the document almost unenforceable by the police department.
Thank you, Bill, for your comments. Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll be voting to approve the first reading of this ordinance with the changes, the additional changes that have been made. I would ask that, Miss D, you would call the roll, please?
Arlene Kane?
Yes.
Ray Echathy?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Bob Nussen?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the first reading of this ordinance has been approved. Again, council is reminded that there will be some additional minor corrections that will be coming up prior to our putting this up for the second reading. We move on to our agenda to the resolutions. We're looking at resolution 28-18, a resolution to create a part-time library clerk position. I would like and ask that there be a motion to table this. We do not have the information that we need to make a good decision concerning the finances and how we're going to finance that library clerk position, and that will be taken up at the next admin finance meeting. So I would ask that there be a motion to table resolution 28-18-18.
I'll make a motion to table resolution 28-18-18, a resolution to create a part-time library clerk position until the next council meeting.
Been moved and seconded to table this resolution. There any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we move on to resolution 28-19. And this resolution is the intent to exchange the land located at the corner of 21st and Canton. If you do approve this motion, what that would do, we set in motion the wheels to place this on the agenda, planning and zoning, have our city administrator work out the agreements, nail down the agreements with the property owner, and then that would be brought back, those agreements as agreed to, would be brought back to the council for final approval. So we're not voting, if you vote on this, we're not voting in favor of actually doing that land exchange until that exact. that land exchange until that exact agreement comes before the council. Are there any questions on that? If not, I'd accept a motion to approve Resolution 28-19.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-19, a resolution of intent to exchange land located on the corner of 21st and Canton, Old Water Field Station, for land on the corner of Evanston and 11th Street, armory lot with a private plot.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we do pass this resolution of intent, but again, if we do pass this resolution of intent, that does not bind the council to approving that. If further information comes forward concerning what we've heard tonight with the individual that came forth with the plan to develop those lots, so we're just setting in motion to make that land exchange possible. Are there any other comments or questions? Yes, go ahead, please come forward so we can.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm Frank Mason. I'm the next door neighbor to this property on Evanston. And Jerry Cogan and I are both residents of that particular area, and I guess our question is that the wording, is it going to be exchanging land? Now, by land, do you mean all the lots on the land, part of the lots of the land?
But there's just one lot, Frank, that we, that's the exchange, and that's the lot next to the armory going, you know, toward.
That goes to Evanston.
Evanston. And that's just one lot that we would be exchanging. The city does own now the armory lot where the armory building is located, and that lot line is right at the boundary of that, of that building.
So that is not under consideration for an exchange?
No, that would be, that would be, our original plan was to develop that entire property as some kind of housing development, or allow a developer to make that available to a developer to develop into, into housing, hopefully workforce housing.
Okay.
The legal descriptions are on the resolution.
Okay.
Not on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate your. Are there any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'd ask that, Misty, that you call the roll on this. This is a very, very important decision that we're making.
Harleen Kane?
Yes.
Ray Echathy?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion carries. We'll put those wheels into action, and we certainly want to keep an open door with the developer to ensure that we're doing the best that we can for our community. Next on the, on the agenda is Resolution 2018-20. This is a resolution to purchase real property commonly known as Building 1, the Men's Dorm from the state of South Dakota. We've discussed this in the past, this is a pass-through resolution, and we will have Resolution next, Item D 28-21, to transfer that property, the Men's Dorm, to the Southern Hills Future Foundation. So I would ask at this time for a motion to approve the purchase of a real property, Building 1, at the state home, and that purchase price is $1. I believe there has been a donation made to cover that expense.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-20, a resolution to purchase real property commonly known as Building 1, Men's Dorm, from the state of South Dakota.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to purchase that property. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
I have a question. It'd be on page two of the State of South Dakota Office of School and Public Lands document. Paragraph two, last sentence. Purchaser, purchaser, sure, shall pay all recording and transfer fees. I'd ask Misty if she could check to see what those fees are. I believe you'd said they're $30.
And we would hope that the, that could be passed on to the organization that we're donating that building to.
And thank you for the donation, but can you confirm that in fact didn't come from Hot Springs taxpayers?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Came from my allowance from my wife. Okay, are there any other questions or comments concerning this transfer? Again, a very, very good opportunity for our community. If not, I'd ask all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we move on to Resolution 2018-21, and that's the transfer of the real property to Southern Hills Future Foundation. Again, we feel this is a very good opportunity for our community to keep a building alive and have a potential that we can add some additional businesses or serve as a function to help grow our community. So I'd accept a motion to transfer that real property, and quickly, please.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-21, a resolution for the gratuitous transfer of real property, commonly known as Building 1, Men's Dorm, to Southern Hills Future Foundation.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we make that transfer. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Brian, do you have any comments that you would like to make from the Southern Hills
I think, as all you know, I'm always good for a comment or two. It might not be in the best interest, but I'll make a few comments. One, Bob, we're more than happy to cover the fees associated with the transfer. This is truly out of a city deal to take care of any of the costs associated with that. I got the dollar with me, though. I did bring that, you know, I appreciate the gratuitous nature of what happens here, and I appreciate the city's efforts in making this a reality. I want to talk a little bit about what's happened the last two weeks since the last meeting. There was a local citizen who made a comment that's gotten faster on the community that this isn't the Southern Hills Future Foundation, this is Brian Spitzer acquiring Building 1, and I can assure you it's not. The Southern Hills Future Foundation, I haven't really parlayed to the council, is made up of a group of people, myself, John Pence, Heidi McBride at First Interstate Bank. We also have representation from Black Hills Energy, Golden West Telecommunications, and Black Hills Federal Credit Union, as well as a member of the Governor's Office, Economic Development on our staff and our board. We have all the corporate players that are here, and they see the value of doing this transfer, and it's the value of Hot Springs. So it's a big deal for us, and I think the council has acknowledged that as well. You're going to see some good things come of this. We look forward to a possible transfer of 20 acres and 16 city lots as well. That is still in the works. It's being reappraised right now, and if that comes to fruition, that will also be a Southern Hills Future Foundation, not Brian Spitzer again. But I want to clarify for you what's going on there and what the makeup of my board is. We do have the future of Hot Springs in our eyesight. Thank you.
And thank you, Brian. We appreciate your efforts, and I suppose that rumor got started because of all the hard work you did to do the light work.
I do get nailed a time or two for putting my nose in too much business, but I believe in it. That's really where it's at. If there's not handle of us willing to put our money where our mouths are and our time and our efforts where it deserves to be, things like this really wouldn't get done. So, you sure you don't want that dollar back? I am the mighty man.
Talk to my wife. I don't know if I'll get it.
Brian?
Yes, Bob? I forget, you always have another question.
I just wanted to mention that my, my personal expectation is not that the city would be reimbursed for the $30. I just think it's important that when the city's spending money, whether it's $30, $30,000, .41 was one of the bills that we approved tonight, that the public knows what the costs are associated with the actions that we're approving. So that was the reason for questioning. If it'd been $500, I might not be making the same comment, but for $30, I certainly think it's a good investment for the city to get this down.
Oh, we appreciate that.
Thank you for being welcome.
We do appreciate that, and if Misty changes her mind for some reason, send me a bill.
Oh, we'll take the $30.
I can challenge any challenge here, so. Either way, we're happy with it. Thank you again.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And again, thanks again, Southern Hills Future Foundation. Moving on into new business, we have Item A, which is an easement off of Dorm Road near our water tower. The Cavals, I talked with them today, there's some, just some minor issues and questions that need to be resolved. There's not a real time crunch on getting this done, so I'd ask that the council would move to table Item A until the next meeting.
Make a motion to table Item A until the next council meeting?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we table Item A, and again, we will be meeting with the Cavals this Wednesday. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of tableting Item A, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to Item B, we have a possible motion and discussion to approve the contract 28-18-7. This is agreement with the Southern Hills Community Recreation Initiative to use the Mueller Center for Youth Gymnastics. They do have a very aggressive gymnastics program and do use the facility for that program in conjunction with the gymnastics setup for the high school. I'd accept a motion to approve that contract at this time.
Make a motion to approve Contract 2018-7, Use Agreement for Southern Hills Community Recreation Initiative to Use the Mueller Civic Center for Youth Gymnastics from November 2018 to February 2019, coinciding with the Hot Springs High School use of the facility for gymnastics.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we do approve that contract. Is there any comments, questions, or discussion?
I have some questions. A question. At the last council meeting, we approved allowing the Fall River Swim Team to utilize Evan's plunge at no cost. And when I look at the two contracts, the one for then and the one for now, they're essentially the same, except that we're asking the Southern Hills Community Reaction, Recreation Initiative, we're charging them $100 a month.
I can answer that.
If you could explain to me the difference why we're providing one facility at no charge and we're asking for a charge of $100.
Sure. Whenever the swim team uses Evan's plunge, it doesn't take up the whole facility. We don't lose money on the ability to have the swim team run their practices. The quadruple section of the pole, they use it. Meanwhile, we're still able to have tourists and members still use the pole, and there's no money lost. In this type of a situation in the Mueller Center, we have an entire room full of gymnastic equipment that is set up, and it takes a whole team of people to break it down and put it away. So it really takes up for this four-month period, an entire large multipurpose room that we could be renting. And if we end up renting it, it costs us a lot of money and manpower to take everything down, put it away, clean everything up, get it ready for our renters, who can literally pay $400 in one afternoon, so that then we then have to pay all of our people to come back in, put the equipment back in place, and have it ready to go for the next morning. It's just a basic cost analysis that we have a lot of money that we have tied up in that space for them to have this, that we can't rent out, or if we do, it costs us money in order to get it into a viable rental space.
All right, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? If not, I'd ask all those in favor of approving Contract 2018-7 to acknowledge by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a possible motion and discussion to approve a lot line revision between two lots. They're owned by the same person on Mystery Lane, which is a member of the, which is a piece of property on the Back Nine Edition, near the golf course, and that property, as I mentioned, is owned by the same property owner. They do have a map showing that change. You do have a map showing that change in your packages, and I believe that lot line is being changed to provide access to both lots so they can both be developed. I'd accept a motion to approve that revision.
Does everybody understand the map still over the end? Is this the revision? If you look at your map, there's a line that comes straight, if you took a line straight through Mystery Lane, it'd go straight up and then down. What that did was it, there's a house that's being built right behind that line, and it actually really pressed it up too close to the front of the property line. So they're just taking from point A to point B, and making it a straight line instead of a bend line. And that actually gives them a little bit more front, front property. Thought it was the other way around.
Easier to mow.
I'll make a motion to approve lot line revision between lots owned by the same person on Mr. Lane, shown on flat, Lot B9-15RR, Lot B9-16A, and Lot B9-16B, on the Back Nine Edition of the City of Hot Springs, Fall River County, South Dakota, containing all lots B9-15R and B9-16R.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve that lot line revision. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item D, we are looking at a possible motion and discussion to approve the hiring of Attorney Pat Ginsba as a co-counsel to our city attorney Garland Goff. I would like to ask that that motion be amended as it's written there on your packages to add, add a rate of $125 per hour for duties assigned by the city attorney. What we are concerned in our discussion today, that we would like to have, ensure that our city attorney directs the activities of Mr. Ginsba, and so the motion would read, possible motion and discussion to approve the hiring of Pat Ginsba as co-counsel to support city attorney Garland Goff in the cornerstone lawsuit at a rate of $125 per hour for duties assigned by the city attorney. And I'd accept a motion to approve that motion as amended.
I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of Pat Ginsba as co-counsel to support city attorney Garland Goff in the cornerstone, in the cornerstone construction lawsuit at a rate of $125 per hour for duties assigned by the city attorney.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve that hiring of Pat Ginsba as an assistant to our city attorney for the cornerstone lawsuit activities. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
I have a question for the city attorney. And thank you for commenting that, that in reading it, it looked like this is boilerplate language that an attorney would give to somebody, saying, you know, here's what I'll do for, for these fees. So assuring that he's working under your direction as the city's attorney, I appreciate that, that amendment. And in paragraph three, do you, do you, okay. The last sentence, client will from time to time advance or reimburse attorney for the same as necessary upon presentation by attorney's office with such bills for payment. My concern is with the advance. City typically doesn't pay for services that they haven't received. So I'm, am I correct when I read this, that the attorney could say, well, I expect that I'm going to need five hundred dollars for this or that, and you need to pay me before, you know, I do the work?
Well, first off, I talked to Mr. Ginsba, and this is just his boilerplate fill-in-the-blank. We call them engagement letters. I have one that's very similar. As far as that, he, he understands the, the situation where I'm, you know, lead attorney on this, I'm the city attorney, he's co-counsel. As far as advance, there's nothing been discussed about, you know, getting a retainer. He understands it's just a billing at an hourly rate, and that he would submit his bills to Misty to be reimbursed by the city.
And that's why we had the amendment to specifically state that it would be at a rate of a hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour. And so there would be no need for any advances that would, he would do that work, and whatever work was done would be paid at that hourly rate. And it would be authorized or go through our, our city attorney. And that, that's why we added that amendment to remove that question from the fee statement that we received.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
If I may, just make one more comment.
Sure.
You know, initially I proposed this to the city. I just wanted to let the public know and, and just kind of get it on record, that the reason that, you know, we're suggesting hiring Mr. Ginsba is his knowledge of this case and of the time period. This whole case was, I guess you say, the foundations of it started in two thousand five, two thousand six. He was the city attorney at that time, so he has a wealth of knowledge of the people who were actually involved in this case. And in the end, I think it'll be more efficient and cost the city less to hire him to help me on this matter because of his knowledge. And that's why I made that request.
Okay, thank you, Garland. Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You have before you item B, a possible motion and discussion to approve a codification agreement from the American Legal Publishing Corporation that authorized the mayor to sign letter on behalf of the city and paying for that from contingency funds. Again, you have a summary of contract in your packages to codify our ordinances, and I think this is something that some of the local communities have done, to put them on a website in standard format. These codification reviews also include references to the South Dakota codified laws so that we can understand the background and so forth that our ordinances, that give our ordinance a foundation to stand on. And it allows them to review all of our ordinances, create an index, so that if there is any kind of a search that needs to be done, for example, on keeping of chickens or, or some of the other issues that people are needing information, a search can be done. They would host that on, and on the internet with a link to our website. And so I think this is a very, very important aspect that we, we look at. I think just one of the things that highlighted that is the ordinance that we looked at earlier on with the traffic regulations, kind of pointed out a need that we need to standardize the language, the way that we, we write our ordinances, and this corporation has that capability to, to do that for us. And we feel that it's worth dipping into our contingency funds to, to fund that. And Misty, I don't have at the tip of my fingers, what's the total funding that we looked at, the maximum that it would cost?
It's around eighty-five hundred dollars.
Okay. So at this time, I'd accept a motion to approve that codification agreement with American Legal Publishing.
I'll make a motion to approve the codification agreement from American Legal Publishing Corporation and authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the city, funding to pay the expense of conference contingency funds.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve that codification agreement. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
I got a comment. Looking at the summary that's in your packet, the seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars is based on a single column format. A single column would be four hundred and forty-two pages. So if you, if we then look at the cost for three hundred and fifty-four pages at nineteen dollars per page, it looks like the cost would then come down to six thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. If you've had a chance to look at the packet that was provided from the American Legal Publishing folks, the two-column seems to be more standard, which you'll see when you go to South Dakota's website. It just, I can pass this around, but it just looks better in a single column, plus it's less expensive. The other additional cost, Misty had mentioned eighty-four hundred, is the cost of five hundred dollars to have the ordinances converted so that they're usable online. And we've talked about admin finances recommending doing the internet hosting. First year, that fee would be waived for four hundred and seventy-five dollars. So the first year cost would be eighty-four fifty-six. If we did the single column, it looks like seventy-two twenty-six. So if we approve the eighty-four fifty-six tonight, that would certainly give us enough for the dual column if the council decides that's the direction they want to go after taking a look at the dual column or single column format. And as the mayor said, they also go through our ordinances and put them in layperson's terms rather than the term Bill prefers to use for an intersection. He fought very hard to keep that one in there. So there's, there's a big benefit to it. As you've seen, the ordinances have come in front of you. It's time to have it updated and become more user-friendly to the public.
I also have one question, and I, does, does this company keep, does it follow challenges to various communities' ordinances? So that if, if they've documented it, or if our traffic ordinance looks very much like Spearfish and Sturgis and on, on and on, but there's a legal challenge, and they realize something in the, the verbiage isn't proper, isn't, doesn't hold up in court, will they then share that learning and provide that update?
They do have a staff of attorneys, and any update would have to be passed by council, but they will, they're basic codified laws, so as changes come, they'll make recommendations to us, and then it would go back in front of this council to approve those.
Thank you.
A good question. Any other questions or comments?
I'd just like to make a comment from a user, somebody that works with the city ordinances on a daily basis. This is critical for us to be able to move forward. Whenever a contractor or somebody that's interested in our community comes in, right now, our ordinances are all formatted differently. Whenever Misty and I first were hired, they were still in WordPerfect. It took two winters for me to get them slowly transferred over to Word, so I think they ought to pay us money for that. But the point is, is that all of our ordinances are very much intermingled with each other. Whenever we did the adult entertainment ordinance and tried to get that together, that actually required three different ordinance changes. And those are the kind of things that, and I think Bob sees this all the time, whenever he's researching, whenever somebody has a question about a certain permit or a certain license, there's four or five places that you have to look to figure it out. And I think this codified system will really help eliminate a lot of those confusions, missed items, and I think we're just going to be running better as an overall organization.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'd ask all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Also have in your packages a glider hangar lease agreement with Black Hills Soaring Club. That has been readdressed with our airport advisory board and the Soaring Club. And Bill, I believe you were at that meeting?
Yes.
To attest to the fact that it was agreed upon as reasonable by both parties?
Yes, it was actually presented, I think by Kim and by the, the board, if the glider club would be open to a, a stepped increase in the, in the monthly lease as opposed to going from five hundred to seven hundred dollars per month. They were agreeable to that, and after some discussion, we settled on the, essentially a forty dollar per month, per year increase through the five-year life of the, of the lease. And then the following discussion, that the city has in the past been paying the electric bill on that hangar, the hangar does have a dedicated meter, and it was determined and agreed, discussion between the advisory board and the, the members of the glider club, that we would bill them for the actual usage. That way, in the wintertime, if they decide to have a workday and bring in a bunch of electric heaters, and we've said, oh, you're only going to have to pay thirty dollars a month, then we don't have to bear the cost of that increased power usage, and they were in agreement with that.
Okay, thank you. So I'd accept a motion to approve that glider lease agreement?
I'll make a motion to approve the glider hangar lease agreement with Black Hills Soaring Club effective January first, twenty nineteen, through December third, first, twenty twenty-three. I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve that glider hangar lease agreement. Any further comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item G is a possible motion and discussion. We want to set a public hearing on the November fifth council meeting to consider an application of transferring an existing retail on-off sale malt beverage license and South Dakota Farm Wine licenses from C S Incorporated doing businesses Battle Mountain Convenience to M G Oil Company Incorporated doing business at Corner Pantry. These would be used at seven forty Battle Mountain Avenue.
I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing on eleven five, twenty eighteen, at seven fifteen P M. to consider the application to transfer the existing retail on-off sale malt beverage license and S D Farm Wine licenses from C S Inc. doing businesses as Battle Mountain Convenience to M G Oil Company Incorporated doing businesses as Corner Pantry number eleven and number eleven B to be used at seven forty Battle Mountain Avenue.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, we approve that, setting that public hearing. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And item B, each, we have a possible motion and discussion. We're looking at approving an automatic budget supplement, four thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars out of the water fund to, for roof replacement at the Evans Punge pumping station, which has been completed.
I'll make a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement of four thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars to the water fund six zero two dash four three three five zero dash four two five two zero, building repairs and maintenance for the roof replacement of the Evans Pumping Station, revenue received from claims Associates, Associates Inc., two thousand sixteen insurance claim for hail damage G C two zero one six zero eight eight two five two. I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we make that budget supplement and approve it. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to finance officer report, Misty.
Thank you. And thank you, council, for approving the ordinance codification. It's been something that previous city administrator, Kim, in both her roles and myself have worked on since we started focusing on them and trying to get them on our website to make them more user-friendly to the public and the council. It's a step in the right direction, and I think the expenses will work it, so thank you. We are in the finance office focusing on end-of-year stuff. It's only October, but we're starting to prepare the last appropriation ordinance of the year, look at our budgets, and try to look into a crystal ball and imagine what we may not have expected, and also adjust for things that have happened since our last one. End-of-year spending for the city gets to be sometimes interesting, so I encourage you all to review the bills and ask any questions if you have them. I think that all of our departments are fairly well-trained and understand that we don't just spend up money at the end of year, but it seems like every year about this time, we start maybe tightening our belts a little bit or thinking about purchases a little, a little harder since we're getting closer to the end of the year, the end of that budget approval time. We did receive notification that the state was, is going to once again raise minimum wage, this time for twenty nineteen, the raise will be twenty-five cents. So the South Dakota State Minimum Wage effective January one, two thousand nineteen will be twenty-five, or nine dollars and ten cents, which is a twenty-five cent increase from the eight eighty-five it is currently. The good news is that this amount is equal to the COLA increase for also, or you have also approved to give out full-time employees, so that's equal. But it is five cents less than we budgeted for, since we have to prepare our budgets before these numbers come out. I think it'll make a huge difference in our budgets, but we did plan for about the twenty-seven increase, and it is going to be twenty-five. Karen Bingley, the Assistant Finance Officer, and myself will be at a basic sales tax seminar in Rapid City on Tuesday, the twenty-third. On that day, our training gets done at twelve thirty, and we are going to meet with the auditors from Kadel Thorstensen to review our business with them, prepare for the twenty eighteen audit or for the twenty eighteen audit or discuss preparations for it. And they will also be reviewing the grant policy I've been struggling with. Um, they did create the findings. They didn't have any examples to share policies, but I've gotten a lot farther than I was when I initially asked for their help. Black Hills Council, local governments reached back out to me and said it wasn't in their area of expertise and I believe I've mentioned to you before that other communities are trying to create one also, so reaching out to resources hasn't been, uh, that successful, but hopefully after their review of what we've come up with so far, um, we can get that proposed grant policy on a council agenda before the end of the year for you to review. We did receive notice late, late last week that the state of South Dakota through the governor's office has approved administrative leave days, um, the Friday after Thanksgiving, so the twenty-third, well, the nice long weekend, the Monday before Christmas, the twenty-fourth, and the Monday before New Year's Day, so New Year's Eve Day, Monday, December thirty-first, were all, um, granted by the governor's administrative leave days. And our policy is to follow that, so thanks for that. Um, I did also just want to mention this magazine that you all get, put out by the municipal league. I don't know if you take the time to read them, but there's some excellent articles in this magazine. The one for October in particular, uh, talks about items that are going to be on your ballot. Uh, if anyone from the public is interested in any of this information, I'd share it with you, but also council, um, constitutional amendment W has gotten a lot of attention from the municipal league and the chamber, the state chamber of commerce. There's, uh, good descriptions for all of them, but that one in particular was very good and interesting reading. And then another article that I found super interesting that I would drier to mention too is the article titled, "The More We Grow, the Poorer We Become." Sounds kind of sad, but it's a very well-written article with a lot of facts and data and I thought it was super interesting, so just want to make sure that guys are looking through these and reading through them and then also to share with the public if there's any, um, information that might be in these that you're interested in having, be happy to share it as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Misty. Kim?
Well, we've been, uh, working on a lot of different things. Uh, right now we, we're working with some engineers out of Dayton, Ohio to find a cost-effective solution to allow us to construct a cantilever sidewalk along with the twenty twenty-one highway reconstruction project. We anticipate to hear from the Composite Advantages engineer later this week. Um, we also have been working with Evans Plunge, um, on some new signage that you might be looking at. I'm hoping that we're going to get it done by the end of the year, but it might be, uh, we purchase it and then put it up in better weather, depends, you know, we could have ninety degrees in December. But one of the things you should know is that Evans Plunge had an article written on a website called Only in Your State and the article's titled, "This South Dakota Waterpark May Just Be the Most Unique in the Country." Um, and it goes through a lot of pictures, it goes through the history of Evans Plunge, so it's another time that, um, people are noticing just how special, uh, Evans Plunge is, you know, the things that we, we know when we take for granted. A congratulations goes out to Ed Jensen, our airport manager, who was elected to the two thousand nineteen director for the South Dakota Airport Managers Association. Um, he said that next year he's not going to go, but I think we're going to keep making him. Um, Hot Springs is hosting the Sheds Meeting, it's the Southern Hills Economic Development Summit, this Halloween on October thirty-first. Sheds is a group of people interested or involved in regional economic developments, specifically to the southern hills. By holding the meeting here in Hot Springs, we get to show off our community and the businesses here and get real feedback on what we're doing right and maybe about some missed opportunities all by the experts, um, from all around the, the southern Black Hills and from the state. We usually have some people from G O E D, um, the governor's office that attend those meetings. Um, we also are having a gentleman come in from Missouri who did, uh, some larger workforce housing and he does it on a regional basis. So, um, on something like our lots where we only have maybe four small lots available here, but Neighbor Works has another four there and there's a couple up in Custer and there's a couple down in Edgemont and there's a few over in Hill City. This gentleman actually works that on a regional basis to create value for his business coming in. And what they do is pre-engineered buildings, they build them and from one place and move them to another. They are not mobile homes, they are, are not double wides, um, they're pre-engineered buildings that are put onto a full foundation. Um, and so he's going to be coming and talking to everybody in the region and that seemed like a really great time for him, so we're going to have that available as well on the, on the thirty-first. We also have been, from what Bob had been saying, we've been reviewing proposed changes to the water and wastewater ordinances in the public works committee and we hope to bring those changes forward to council in November. You'll probably get it as an informational section, um, for the first meeting and have hopefully a first reading of the second meeting in November. That's the last time that we can do it and still have it passed this year. I'm very proud of Pete Miles of getting onto the volunteer fire department. He was very excited about putting in his application and made sure he, uh, it was okay with all of us and we're like, yay! Uh, so it was great to hear that, um, he made it through and he's on his probation. Uh, so, uh, we'll keep an eye on Pete and make sure he does a good job.
Okay, thanks, Kim. Busy time. And, uh, as far as, uh, mayor's report, again, I want to thank you, Kim and Tracy for looking for a, a way to perhaps, uh, reduce the costs and, uh, requirements for our cantilever sidewalk. I did receive a heads up from South Dakota D O T that, uh, they're pressuring us to come up with a design soon. They want to finalize the design of the, uh, cantilever sidewalk. I will get the letter and I will answer them that, uh, you know, we sent them a letter well over a year ago in, expressing our interest to have that included and we still stand by that. But, uh, the composite design might provide us a way that, uh, we don't, uh, interfere at all with the, uh, existing flood wall, which may be some hard red tape that we have to go through with the current, our Army Corps engineers to approve. So again, uh, thanks, Kim, for researching that and, uh, making contact with Composite Advantage. I hope too that, uh, as we have the Minnacotta Bridge to redo, that we might get them interested in providing a deck, a roof, uh, bridge decking for that bridge. Again, uh, I think it'd be good for them, they're, uh, we've got an excellent, uh, beautiful community to show off and I think it would be good advertising for Composite Advantage to, uh, complete that, uh, that project or help us complete that project. I did also receive, uh, an update from the FAA today concerning the clean, uh, mining lease and agreement. Uh, the EPA, uh, process is still ongoing. There has been some concern by the tribes, uh, that, uh, there are of, has some potential for the Cheyenne River pollution. That item was not brought up when we had our meeting in August by the tribes, but apparently that is an ongoing thing. The FAA is working with them to resolve that, uh, issue and, uh, we hope that that can be done soon so the approval process can proceed onward. Also, uh, you've noticed that we've got some detours, uh, as a result of the Houston Avenue sewer project that is ongoing. You can see that, uh, the line has been completed, uh, there on the bridge by pro-build and that manhole is finished. Because of weather, that project has been delayed slightly and, uh, we're looking at an early November, uh, completion date, uh, due to weather and a couple of minor changes on that. And again, I want to thank the council for, uh, your involvement and, uh, we made some very important decisions tonight. We're looking at some important things for the future of Hot Springs. What we do with the land swap is important. Uh, you heard that we do have some interest, uh, and I'm glad to hear that for developing our lots. Uh, so I think those are very, very important for our future and, uh, again, I want to thank you for your involvement. I also think it's an important decision that we made concerning, uh, the building one and, uh, getting that, uh, in, uh, an organization that has the type of board that can, uh, help Hot Springs specifically perhaps land, uh, some businesses there, uh, and hopefully can bear fruit in growing our community in the future. All of you, uh, are appreciated for your work done on the commu-, uh, committees. A lot, uh, people don't see the extra time that is spent reviewing bills, coming to committee meetings and, uh, reviewing packages and asking questions, so I, I want to thank you. In particular, I also want to thank our, uh, our city staff. Misty and Kim are outstanding professionals. Uh, again, they don't have a staff of assistants to rely on. They end up, uh, we end up asking them the questions, they have to do the research, find the answers and present those without a, a staff of, of several as, uh, larger communities have. So appreciate the whole hard work you do because we still have to cover all the areas that any municipality in the nation has to cover. So, thank you. And with that said, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn? Seconded that?
It's been moved and seconded, we adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you all.